I'd like to call City Council of April 25th, order please.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Lazaro.
Here.
Alderman Shockey.
Here.
Alderman Sinbarski. Alderman E. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Yeah, here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Mayor police.
Here.
For him present, please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He's here. First, I need approval of minutes, City Council meeting, April 4th, 2013. Do I have a motion?
I'll take the motion.
Second. Any corrections, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communications and petitions, do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? Alderman Shockey, you want to be recognized?
We all just said, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God." One nation under God. It reminds me that in 1945, there was a new law passed by both houses of Congress and signed by then-President Harry Truman. This law has been upheld and promoted by all the presidents since then, including Eisenhower, Carter, Bush, Clinton, the other Bush, and you might remember another one, I can't think of any others. In 1993, for instance, President Clinton said, quote, "We come together in an act common to all religions." The date of this law is May, the first Thursday of May of every year. The name of the law is "The Nation," Day of Prayer. So I'd like to ask for one minute of silence for each of us to say a prayer, if you wish. And that's it, starting now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do any other citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda?
My name is Richard Buckley, this is Gary Weeks, and we represent Pine Wood's Restaurant Group. We're the founders, and we are in application, or will be in application, for a beer and wine license to operate a deli off of Irving Street. We prepared a little slideshow to kind of give you an idea of what we do and who we are. So if you would allow us, we can go to the iPad and give you a little PowerPoint, tell you a little bit about our business.
Sure, go ahead.
Great, thanks.
We have it.
Chief, is the mic on there?
One, two, three. Can you hear us? I apologize, I have a little bit of a cold here, so I'll be gravelly a bit.
No problem.
So, this is, I'm gonna look at the screen to make it easier for me. We're Pine Wood's Restaurant Group. We've, Gary and I, and I'll just go to the next screen, this is a little bit about us. We've been in the business together for 20 years, 50 combined, really it's about 55. I've been in the restaurant business for 35, owned bars and restaurants, delis, food concessions, number of different businesses. He and I have collaborated on this type of use since 1994, and been successful at it. So this is, we're introducing Molly's Deli, this is one of our brands, it's a new brand to Illinois in this area. We looked at locations, and this is a particular location. This is Kevin's building over here, so we just scripted in on the end cap. We think this is a great location for us. It's close to the rail line, there's great traffic, it has good visibility. We tend to be a social neighborhood environment, and this would fit the bill for us.
Yeah, and we feature, you know, food, and talking to Kevin and everything, we're pretty close to the train station and that. We can do a lot of different types of foods, we say we're a deli, but like in the case of the train station there, we can certainly supply some food on the go, some nice breakfast sandwiches, bagels, things like that. Richard kind of understates his background, he's ran some really great restaurants and is very good, and we can be very flexible with the menu. We will show you the menu, our basic deli menu, but we can do wraps, we can do burritos, we can do all different types of things. In this particular case, it wouldn't be unusual for us to do the breakfast and go on the go, but I think we could sure be an asset to that area and to all the commuters and people who use the rail line.
So, one thing we do, we combined gaming with the deli operation. But our background and our basis is food-based.
Yeah, we are food-based.
So we create a food environment that has sort of a social and a recreational aspect, and it's the gaming. We take advantage, quite frankly, of the Illinois gaming law. Our thought is it would be a year from the time we get going before we would be licensed to game. We have five machines, and I can leave a floor plan or talk about a floor plan, but that's our background, we started it, we create traffic with our food business, that's our core business, and there's some misunderstandings or misconceptions about what some operators do, I can't speak for others, but what we do is we create a food business from the start. And we've hired, and I'll get into that, we have a gentleman from Marriott Food and Beverage Director, Marriott, he's our director of food and beverage, we build that from the ground up. Whoops, excuse me.
Yeah, and what we're not, we, you know, in order to get a gaming license, you have to have a liquor license. If it wasn't for that, we wouldn't be here asking you for a liquor license. I would say that liquor sales would represent probably about 10% of our sales. What we're not in the liquor business, and we have no opposition to this because both of us are big sports fans and we've spent time.
Excuse me. Need to speak a little closer into the mic.
Oh, okay.
It's not, because we're being recorded.
Oh, okay, very good. We, you know, we're not a sports bar, and we're not going to have televisions, it's not a happy hour or anything, that's not what we're known for. It's more of a casual, comfortable, if a person wants a glass of wine or a beer, that's fine, but we're not in there to create an environment of like a sports bar, or to push a lot of liquor. That's not who we are or what we do.
Right, in fact, regarding liquor, we only ask for a beer and wine lic- pardon. We only request a beer and wine license because for our business, it has to be comfortable and clean, and we appeal to women, they have to feel safe and comfortable in the environment, we can't have guys drinking shots and that sort of thing, it's not that type of environment. And there's a place for it, it's just not ours. So we get, our demographics tend to be 35 to about 70, and we've had 25, of course, and 90, I suppose, but we have a pretty broad, mature, if you will, look, I bet some gray hair show, we try to create a place that we would like to go. So, we do beer and wine, we're asking for a V license, but there again, it's incidental to our business. We supply it, and we're gonna have a quality product, but we're not a bar, we're not gonna just set up for drinks only and then have gaming machines, that's not what we're about. If anything, we're about creating a great food environment with a good guest experience, and if people play machines, that's great, if they donate eat, that's great as well. The way, our experience, and I can only go from our experience, is we use the gaming to pay the expenses. And rather than, I've been in the food business without the gaming, at this point, I like the model, I would stay with it, it makes all the difference. So we think it's gonna pay rent, and pay utilities and occupation costs, and the rest is, quite frankly, is it gonna go off? We're, it's, we do them in multiples, so we do, for instance, we cluster units, about four in a geographic area, so we can trade human resources, but our focus is on a guest experience, that's how we started, that's how we ended. This is a menu, I'm sorry, it's, that's a menu that we currently use, and I can read off some of the items, but we have knife and fork sandwiches and cold and hot. Got it, okay, great, thank you. So this, and this is actually a truncated menu, we have our new menu that is in development, and we're working all the time with the food. That'll be out, we'll be ready to print, I hope tomorrow, if all goes well. And so we've beefed up some of the items, because we felt like we needed to modify the price point and grow the menu for this particular location. Also, we would do the, we definitely would do grab and go and appeal to sort of that quick commuter traffic.
Yeah, and here, it would really lend itself to a breakfast clientele, we think it would, just with the train station, so that's.
This is, and there again, you'll have to excuse us, these are renderings, they tend to be a bit cartoonish, but we try to represent that it's upscale, and we normally, if we have room, we'll place an area for a seating area, sort of a little pod with a sofa and a couple of chairs, but we'll create a seating and a comfortable area. When we place the machines, we will place them, I think I left the floor plan, we will place them in the back area generally, or divide them, so we can work together with food and the gaming, they don't have to compete and bang heads. So, we'll get people that like the game, we'll get people that like to eat, we can do it in the same environment and not have issues with that. Here's another shot, just from the back, and it's dark, I apologize, there it's tough. So, this is to give you a representation, and we have a whole color palette and that sort of thing, but generally, we place our seating in the front, and we, depending on the particular spot, we have, with Kevin's place, we have some flexibility on what we're gonna do, but we'll set up the game, and we generally do half walls and that sort of thing. So, it's divided, but part of the whole. Let's see. Excuse me. So, you know, I threw in a slide for quality people, friendly people, that's the backbone of any business, anyone that's in business knows that. We will recruit from the local colleges and get people, if they're in the hospitality industry, they make great starter folks for us, they'll come on. We've got a gentleman, Joe Davis, who's got a 30-year background in food and beverage, that we recruited him specifically for his skills that augment my skills, and to create menus and that sort of thing, and we hire from the community, we'll get people close, that's how we do it. And ideally, we'll cross-train our people for our different locations, and to keep things interesting, we move them around, and they like to be moved around, and if somebody doesn't show, then that has happened to us before.
Yeah, that's what, that's the advantage of having like a group and having a district manager, so that, you know, sometimes that's, that can be a problem for multiple reasons, so we've got somebody to always man and represent us and always keep the store open.
So, we were asked to provide a model, we tried to be really, quite frankly, conservative, and we would hope to do better, we have an idea for historically what our growth can be, but we, I mean, the target is at a minimum, and we know it takes a long time to ramp the first year, it just does, that's what it is, it starts slow, first month, second month, and then we begin to build, second year, we always have a nice rate of growth. So, we can call it about $300,000 for our first year revenues. We hope, our food and beverage manager said, you know, if we can't do year-two figures in year-one, we've done something wrong, but we'd rather present a conservative view rather than try to give a big pie in the sky, we think this is reasonable and we can back that up. Second year, we always have a big spurt, and then we continue to have growth, we try to, so that's the food and beverage. We put in a gaming model, because I think it's important, quite frankly, this says first year, the likelihood is zero. It would take us, we think right now, about 10 months to gain a gaming license because of the backlog. The state, although it was adopted in 2009, the state, as you may or may not know, has really slow-walked the proliferation of licenses, partly because they had software issues, partly because I think they just wanna see how things break out, and for us, that's fine, we understand it. So, we're in a business that we don't have to wait and say, we're not gonna go in because of the 10-month delay, we'll go in and build our business. What we'd like to do is gain the license, get into application, then begin to build the business, and hopefully, we don't have to wait 10 months, but if we do, we do. So in a way.
Actually, it's going at about, quite honestly, right now, at the rate, if we were to go into application today, I think, you know, it's not 10 months, it's like 12 months, so Richard's kind of anticipating, and in fact, we've talked to some people, it might be 14 months, just at the current rate that the state is going, we're not being critical of that, that's just the way it is. And if we were to get a liquor license and go into application to the Illinois Gaming Board, you know, it could be 14 months, and, you know, that's just what it is, so. So that's why we put, you know, the first year would be, I'm sure, zero in the gaming.
One thing I'll tell you, and I don't know your experience, but the gaming machines, we contract out, they're approved by the state, that's a third-party vendor, we contract with them, they come in, they supply the machines, we don't touch the money, they literally run them, stock them, repair them, clean them, replace them if necessary, and then give us a check as to the, and, oops, excuse me, and then the communities get a, they get a shared revenue, we get a shared revenue, and we hope, quite frankly, that it will pay our costs and help us make a living. So, let's just move on, we did a total store revenue for all, this is their projection, I think they're reasonable, we would hope to be into this range. Can we be perfectly and have a crystal ball? No, I wish we could, but we feel like this would be accurate and we can stand behind these figures. So there again, our second year is always our big growth, and then at some point, you sort of hit your client level and you develop a clientele, and usually it's fairly stable, so that's how we do it. And let's see, if we just summed it up, what we bring to the community is, we bring sales tax revenue, we bring gaming revenue, which we hope that has some meaning to every community and to us certainly, and we provide local jobs, and we run a very good business. We're on site, we get our hands dirty all the way from building out a place to testing the food and making sure it's done well. Can we answer any questions, or does it give you an idea?
Mr. Benn.
Yeah, for the council's consideration, at present, there are no licenses available. Should you wish to entertain us, based on the presentation you've seen, what you would do is request that the matter be placed on the committee agenda, and then you can have a discussion as to whether or not you want to increase the number of liquor licenses, and then it would come back to the full council for approval. So, rather than have, engage in a lot of back and forth, that would be done at the committee level, so if that's the desire.
Hang on.
Go ahead, Alderman Roy Wesley.
These gentlemen from out of state. I would think that if they could get some questions answered now, I think they would appreciate that, if they do have questions, if anyone does have questions. And I have some questions, how many jobs, is this the first time? I do have questions, but these people are from out of state, too. So why can't we, why can't we just ask questions and then?
I don't know. It's not an agenda item.
Right.
We'd have to send it to committee. Basically, I do have a letter that I was gonna read under mayor's report from these gentlemen, I take it this is from you, right? To see if the council wishes to open up another liquor license, see what the consensus was, like we did three weeks ago. Alderman Shockey.
This type of request probably would be, go through a lot smoother if we had a tray of sample sound.
We were told we couldn't bribe you, so that.
Yes, I didn't know, I mean, would that be from the food side, or would that be from the liquor side?
Alderman Roy Wesley, go ahead.
Do I gotta make a motion to put it on committee, then?
That's.
Okay, I'll make that a motion.
Well, should we take a consensus first?
It's for discussion. I don't care.
Okay. If you wanna make the motion.
A motion, yeah, I made the motion to put it on the committee agenda.
For consideration of an additional liquor license.
For additional liquor license.
A second motion.
Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Sinbarski.
Abstain.
Alderman E. Wesley. Alderman Woods.
Abstain.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Coles.
Soon as I'm the last one, I'll say yes.
So it goes to committee.
Next week.
Committee, next committee, which is?
Well.
May 9th.
Could, could, could we have direction from the city manager to get the contact information for them to be here, possibly to set it up for their convenience?
I believe Mr. Forrest has it already, right?
Since they're out of state.
I'll be here on the 9th.
Yeah, we'll be here on the 9th.
We're here, honestly, we're here every other week, and it's a crazy commute, but we've done it, that's, this is just how we do it.
Okay.
And one of our investors, or a number of them are from Chicago, they're friends of mine and that, and so I stay there, I recruited a fella here, and I call him a kid that played football for the University of Oregon, that's.
If you need a hotel, there's one right down the street.
No, we certainly have a place, so we're here frequently.
Thank you.
Could I have one question?
Go ahead, Alderman Coles.
Is this a chain, this Molly's, or is it?
Well, what we hope to do is develop a chain in Illinois, so this, I would say yes, and we're in development of our chain. What we do, our goal is roughly, initially about 10 units that are staged geographically so that we can manage them, and then at some point, if things are wonderful and we wanna go on, we'll build about 25, would be about manageable for us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and on the 9th, we'll see you.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Committee meeting. Do any other citizens wish to be heard? Okay, written communiques, I do have one from Barbara Ann Beresniak. She wants to thank the city for the reverse 911 calls last week regarding the storm. And she's also a retired nurse, and if anybody looking for, I'll give this to the chief. Next, we have a letter from Fenton High School District, this is from the Fenton Academic Team, the Quiz Bowl is in Memorial Day weekend, they had asked, they're trying to raise $600 as of yesterday, I believe, today, they have $200. If council is wishing to, Alderman Wesley, go ahead.
Mr. Manager, have you sent a letter to Addison Trail High School and Lake Park High School?
Mr. Mermis.
I do not solicit donations, I just receive them.
No, I'm saying, have you sent the letter to, to the high schools? And tell them that, forget it, I'll just go to the high schools myself and deal with it that way, because.
Alderman Shockey.
I'd like to make a motion that we contribute up to $300 or whatever they collect themselves.
Well, they collected 200 already.
Well, if they collect one more hundred, we would give them three. If they collect just the 200, we would give them two.
I think we need a motion, though, we needed that specific dollar amount.
Is that your motion?
Come back.
Well, he didn't, he didn't really make a motion. Alderman Roy Wesley, go ahead.
Why don't we send them a letter and give them, tell them what we're thinking of, of matching theirs, and then bring it back next week, at the next council meeting.
What if they raised 400? If we tell them we're matching?
Our maximum would be three.
The max is three. I'll make that in form of a motion, max of three.
Second. Person, Alderman Winger.
We really need to create some rules and standards of when these requests come through. We're getting requests from all different groups, I think a couple of weeks ago, it was a science group from a high school, they're just coming from all different directions, so let's take a step back, set up some guidelines and parameters when we do these kinds of things, and I know, Mr. Mayor, you're looking at having the mayor's ball, I think it's a great way to start getting this under control, perhaps let the school districts participate, and they'd have a certain percentage of the proceeds, and then they can divvy out how they wish, and then internally within the school districts, that they can ask for those monies. So, let's take a step back, and why should we put this one before the one two weeks ago that was the science team or some sort? So, let's take a look at everything before we continue to do this. So I say, let's hold off and review, so I know there's a motion on the floor, and can I actually make a motion to table on top of that? Oh, there was, there was some kind of science team.
There was a motion and a second.
No, then there was a science club right after that.
Right, there was a, there wasn't, well, actually, it was this group here. It was this group.
It's the same group.
It's the same group, yes.
Okay, well then, this is the one that is the.
Do we have a second on the motion to table?
Second.
Roll call, Alderman Woods.
Which, which motion?
This is a motion to table.
To table. Alderman Coles.
No, table it, yes.
Table it, yes?
Lazaro.
No.
Yes?
Don't table.
No table. Alderman Shockey.
Table. No, I'm sorry. Not to table, no.
No.
The feature is no.
No.
Okay, a yes or no would be suffice. Alderman Sinbarski.
No.
Alderman E. Wesley.
No.
Alderman R. Wesley.
No.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Ald- that's it.
Alderman Woods.
Woods.
Oh, yeah, there you go. Alderman Woods. Alderman Woods? Tell them.
No.
Oh, boy.
Okay. So, we go back, motion fails. So, your motion again, Alderman Wesley, go ahead.
Was the max of three hundred dollars.
Was it?
A matching, match, matching max of three hundred dollars.
That's what we see.
And Alderman Shocky, you seconded, correct?
Yes.
Sizmarski, sorry, apologize. Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
No.
For the three hundred dollars?
No.
Okay. Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Shocky?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That passes. And that concludes written communiques. Next, mayor's report. We'll start with Arbor Day proclamation. In eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable source giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas the trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, I know you have the police, mayor of the city of Wooddale, do hereby proclaim Arbor Twenty-Six, two thousand thirteen, as Arbor Day. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's my last day.
Go ahead, Alderman Shocky.
I saw on TV that there's a new method of getting rid of the Emerald Ash Bore by treating the tree rather than dropping those little plastic pellets that are supposed to draw them away. I'm just wondering if we have looked into this, and perhaps because there are so many private, private ash trees, if we might make something to help the people pay for doing their own trees, to split the cost or something like that.
Go ahead, Mr. Gallus.
Yes, sir, we could always look into that. In my experience in the past, the city of St. Charles had been impacted by Emerald Ash Bore as well, and there were treatment options that were available. When we did some calculations on that, let's say you had to treat the tree for a period of ten years, because as long as the bug's here, you have to keep treating. What ends up happening is over time, it's less expensive for you to remove the tree rather than try to salvage a tree. And there's no guarantee that the treatment available today will be successful. So, you know, my experience with it and with the arborists that I've worked with in the past and the arborists we work with today, they seem to recommend that removal is the only sure resolution for that. I would be happy to, you know, provide some more information for, for folks here if, if you desire it.
This was supposed to be new, so you can check into it. Thank you.
Alderman Roy Wesley, go ahead.
Mr. Gallus, I advise you to call City of Chicago and see what they're doing since they're spending two million dollars on their trees over there.
We could put this on a committee meeting if council wishes.
Arbor Day?
No. The Emerald Ash. Take it? Okay. We'll give you some time to get some information and come back to us.
All right.
All right, number one, I'd like to thank.
Staff, the police, public works, all the employees, and the fire department for last week's flooding issues. Everything other than flooding, everything was handled pretty well.
Sorry, Nick, I turned it off. Again, I'd like to thank the staff, the police, fire, public works, all the employees of City Hall for their job well done last week during the flood. We also like to remind everybody, this Saturday, April twenty-seventh, is our Green Fair. Electronic recycling, paper shredding, comm ed will be here, master gardening demo, and rain barrel display. Ten AM to two PM.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Shocky?
Include electronics, TVs?
Yes, electronic recycling.
Thank you.
That concludes my report. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have one item, it's, it's not very exciting, but it is important. Just a reminder to residents that vehicle sticker sales start on Wednesday, May fifteenth. Just a friendly reminder, not necessarily exciting.
Thank you. Next, consent agenda. You have something on the city stickers?
No, I got, I forgot to tell the, I've got something on the manager's report.
Go ahead.
Or you forgot, too. We forgot to thank the Boy Scouts for.
Oh, actually, they're gonna be here next week. They've been invited for a special presentation, the Boy Scouts.
But we needed.
You're right, they should have thanked them as well.
Sorry.
They're gonna, they, they had a, they've been invited. You're right, I should have mentioned them tonight. Anything else? All right. All right, consent agenda, we have one item on the agenda, entertain a motion to approve the, well, approve the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay, now, entertain a motion to approve the item on the agenda. Item number one, resolution seeking to approve an agreement between the city of Wooddale and RJN Group Incorporated for the two thousand thirteen sanitary sewer rehabilitation project. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Abstain.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Shocky?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Next, committee chairman reports, planning and zoning, Alderman Winger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to mention that Alderman Lazara would like to ensure that at our next committee meeting, that we do have a discussion preliminarily on the Potter Street backyards and cleaning them up, looking at the rezoning. So, if it, if we can ensure that that's on our next committee meeting. Thank you. And, and that does conclude my report.
Thank you, and Mr. Forrest was nodding, so point taken. Public health and safety, Alderman Coles.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of an automatic license plate reader for the police department. Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Alderman Lazara?
Correct.
Chief.
Go ahead.
Chief. You were asked if you can find out if there are any monthly fees that were tied to this. Are there in fact?
No, there are no monthly fees. Once we bought it, it's paid for, we get daily updates as long as we own the system. If we choose to, if they upgrade the software, the maximum amount it would be per year is three hundred and fifty dollars for a software upgrade. And I think that'd probably be something that we decide as the year is, the end of the year is approaching, we don't need to decide now. And then we'd make sure to take that out of our operating budget if need be. But three hundred and fifty is the most that it would ever be per year.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Chief, there was a concern, too, about these, the camera. When a police officer finds a vehicle and there's arrest, these cameras are, you could throw another police officer in there to cover that area or for the camera wherever it may be, right?
Chief?
Absolutely, you know, that happens on a regular basis throughout town. If an officer goes down for a DUI arrest or domestic battery arrest or some other type of call, if it's something that's gonna tie them up for a significant amount of time, we could always look to redeploy that car. But that, it does happen on a regular basis, probably a daily basis where, you know, an officer is tied up for several hours on some type of arrest. Some arrests are half hours, some are three hours long, so we'll certainly look to use this as much as possible.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Sizmarski?
Chief, that, that data system, that, is that programmable by our police station, or does that give you everything, like, like you were saying? I don't wanna say a pedophile in a school area, or a drunk driver, or uninsured motorist.
Chief?
Is that what you have to program in, or does it come that way?
There, there's two ways that it will come. One, on a daily basis, the state will, will forward to us through this company, both a state and a national hot list for certain things. In addition, you know, we have several people around the area that we're familiar with, that we can program in on the fly or on a, we can have an ongoing database that, you know, we can have them drop off over a certain period of time. If we have a crime that just occurred at the beginning of the shift, the officer can type that in, and he'll be notified if he sees that car. So, it's kind of two-part. One is we get daily hot lists that are updated every day. The other part is we can add in whatever we want to the system on a daily or however often basis we want to.
So, we can modify to our specific needs then in the area?
Absolutely.
Chief, do you recall the price tag on this, so we can add it to the motion?
I believe the maximum not to exceed was sixteen thousand, seven hundred and five.
Joe, amend your motion.
I made the motion?
Yes, amend your motion to not to exceed.
Not to exceed sixteen thousand, what is?
Seven hundred and five.
How much?
Seven hundred and five.
Seven hundred and five dollars.
You agree? You were the second.
Second, yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
No.
Alderman Shocky?
No.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Abstain.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman Woods?
No.
That fails. It's actually four to three. Okay. Next item, Alderman Coles?
Sorry, chief. I make a motion to approve the temporary speed bumps on Prospect between George Street and Potter. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Oh.
Sorry.
Go ahead. Alderman Lazara?
Was there a petition again taken on this? And what was the amount of people that participated in this petition? Do we know?
Chief, do you recall?
Yeah, a, a form was sent out to the residents that live directly in that area. Nineteen out of twenty-one said that they wanted temporary speed bumps. And then a decision would, they would be re-surveyed later after they're in for a period of time to see if they were interested in permanent-type speed tables, and then that would have to come back to council again.
So, it sounds like the residents want this, huh? Thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Woods?
What was the area that you covered on Prospect from what street?
Goes from George Street to Potter Street on Prospect. It's approximately about two and a half blocks, right, roughly?
Chief?
That's correct, and they did send a letter out to each resident that faces that area. Now, the initial petition that came in from the residents included more responses of people that said that they wanted it. But when the letters were sent out for the official city survey, twenty-one of them returned surveys. But every single house that faces Prospect between Potter and George was given a letter.
Okay, and how many, and, and how many of these speed bumps? Because I thought we were gonna do a little drawing to show, was gonna come back to the council.
Go ahead, Mr. Gallus.
Well, two things that I took away from the last meeting, you know, how many? Five. And then we talked a little bit about what area would cover. And so, we would, we would have that, rather than have it only extend to the parking lane, we would have it extend all the way, not curb to curb, but to maintain the flow of stormwater. So, that's, the price is the same, and what we discussed last time would still apply, all five across the street.
So, it's.
Go ahead.
How many in succession are we gonna have? I know they're gonna go across the street, so there's gonna be five doubles?
Five doubles.
Mm-hmm. And what's, what's the distance that we're talking? Two blocks?
Two and a half blocks.
Two and a half blocks. I mean, George to Potter's not that.
One block.
That, that's excessive.
Yeah.
It's a long block. I was over there Saturday.
That's still excessive.
If you would prefer, you know, again, I, I don't, I didn't recall there, you wanting a sketch of this, if you wanted.
I thought that you were, I thought that that was one of your ideas. I didn't request one, but I, that was a suggestion, and I thought.
My apologies, I don't recall.
I think you and I talked about it, but I don't. Yes, Tim.
Mike? Sure. Go ahead. Well, I think what I, what I recalled saying was that we would follow MUTCD, which is the guiding document that will tell us how many to install. When I said five, I, I guess I was estimating, so that I gave you a number that I know that we would be able to complete this task in, in less than whatever amount we assumed. So, when we go to install them, we'll have to meet those requirements. So, with a sketch or without a sketch, I'll still make sure that we follow the appropriate guidance document.
You have a follow-up?
But we didn't, we didn't look into that already, I guess that. I get you, I mean, you did make the statement that you're gonna follow those guidelines, whatever they were, whatever acronym you used, MSU. Would have been nice to know, you know, two blocks, we're gonna have two of them, we're gonna have three of them, we're saying five, and, and now it may be less than that, so we're covered. Just in the future, it'd be nice to know what the actual numbers were. Thank you.
Alderman Roy Wesley, go ahead.
Well, since we don't have no drawing or anything here, and you know, five is a lot. By the time I get my truck and trailer over, that I'd be going through a roller coaster. And that, since we don't have other information yet, I would like to make a motion to table it.
At the next council meeting?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Yes, you have a second? I'll let the new alderman decide.
Actually, it'd be the alderman sitting here right now, that'll be the next meeting.
No, it won't.
Yes.
May second, right?
But first is the council, take care of business, and then, and then we do all the swearing in. Can we roll call on the table, please?
Alderman Coles?
What's this?
To table.
To table, miss.
If you wanna table it, I'll say yes. Go ahead.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Shocky?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
No.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
It's table till the next council meeting.
Can we have a drawing or something, how this is gonna look? To make it clear?
Mr. Gallus, you have direction? Go ahead.
We could do a drawing, it'll cost us money to do the drawing, I guess I was looking to just follow MUTC.
Hold on, hold on, wait a minute, relax.
Anytime you take a man off.
Hold on, settle down. Go ahead, Rich.
I'll have to get an engineer to sketch that up, draw it up.
I don't think we need anything that fancy.
Okay. That clarity. A sketch.
Just a picture.
Okay.
Are you not an engineer?
All right, thank you.
You are an engineer.
All right. All right, go ahead.
Can't we just, we have a GIS system, go to the GIS, pop it out, I don't care what the scale is, two lines, three lines, five lines. Two lines, three lines, five lines, within reason, we're done. Ten minutes.
Yeah, it's.
Thanks.
Okay. Joe, does that conclude your report?
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Wesley, thank you. Finance Administration, Alderman Shockey?
No report.
Thank you. No other business approval list of bills, April eighteenth. Alderman Shockey, please.
Because it's my last time, I'm going to go through every bill. It may take about forty-five minutes.
No problem. Whatever you like.
Funds are, I'm making a motion now for the general fund, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy cents. The road and bridge fund, five hundred and eighteen dollars, ninety-eight cents. Motor fuel tax fund, twelve thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and eleven cents. Tourism fund, eleven thousand, eight dollars and ninety cents. Capital projects fund, fifty thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-seven cents. Equipment replacement fund, thirty thousand, eighty dollars. Computer parking lot fund, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents. And sanitation fund, seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-two cents. Water and sewer capital projects, twenty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-eight cents. Water and sewer fund, thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-four cents. For a total of all funds of five hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-one cents. And that's in the form of a motion.
Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
No.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. We do need executive session to review the official minutes, land acquisition, probable litigation, and collective bargaining. Need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Like that motion?
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One opposed. We're adjourned.